Shut them off, please. If they go out there in this meeting, you will be asked to leave. Thank you.
She's getting paid, that's...
Welcome to this meeting of the Wooddale Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Roy Sei. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp?
Here.
Dr. Madonna?
Here.
Mr. Cruciani?
Here.
Mr. Caddala?
Here.
Mrs. Schroeder is absent. Mr. Davis is absent. Chairman Sei.
Here. I declare a quorum present. We have four public hearings scheduled for tonight. The hearings will be transcribed by an official court reporter and all testimony will be given under oath. At the hearing, there will be opportunity for the people to offer testimony and to comment. Following the public hearings in these cases, our deliberations will be open to the public in the sense that all are invited to listen and to watch. The public, however, may not speak during our deliberations. The zoning ordinance requires a prevailing vote by a majority of the members of the zoning board of appeals for which these matters will be referred to the city council for approval and for those matters on which the zoning board of appeals will make the final decision. We ask that the applicants here tonight provide a general description of their proposals and then give specific evidence to demonstrate that the applicant's proposal meets the standards of the zoning ordinance for the relief requested. The burden is on the applicant to prove the case. With respect to others who wish to speak, you may give an opinion or present specific evidence as to why you believe that the applicant meets or fails to meet the standards for the relief requested. Finally, we will strictly adhere to the schedule prepared for tonight's meeting. In the case of an applicant or in the event you or your attorney have filed an appearance as an objector, you will be afforded sufficient time within to present your evidence. Whether you are a member of the public wishing to make a statement for the record or a witness testifying on behalf of an applicant or an objector, you will be placed under oath and then begin by stating your name and address. If you are not presenting evidence on behalf of the applicant or an objector, your remarks will be taken after the applicant and all those who filed appearances as objector have presented all their evidence. You will be subject to question by the zoning board of appeals and the applicant or the objector to allow as many people as possible to be heard. If you are not an applicant or an objector, we request your remarks be limited to five minutes. If additional time is needed, the hearing will be continued to the next available hearing date. I will now call the first matter before us this evening. While the agenda lists case number 06-TZ7, we actually closed that public hearing at our July meeting and we will discuss the findings later this evening. Therefore, the first hearing on the agenda is actually case number 06-Z8. Case number 06-Z8 is in regard to the petition of John Barado for rezoning upon annexation of property located at the southwest corner of Creel and Benores Drive from R1 Single Family Residence upon annexation to M1 Limited Manufacturing District to allow for construction and use of an office warehouse facilities. This matter was continued from the hearing of our July zoning board of appeals meeting. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp?
Here.
Dr. Madonna?
Here.
Mr. Cruciani?
Here.
Mr. Caddala?
Here.
Chairman Sei.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Roger, please indicate when the notice of case number 06-Z8 was published and whether, Secretary, you have the certificate of publication from the newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is in receipt of the certificate of publication from the Daily Herald Newspaper. The public notice was published on July 1, 2006 with a control number of T's and T's and Tom 377-3254. And a sign with the appropriate wording had been placed upon the property in the proper manner. Thank you.
Should be sworn in. Should be sworn in.
It should have been sworn in, Roger.
Sorry.
Trying to speed up the proceedings.
Oh, you... Okay, yes. Yes. Is the petitioner present? Please allow yourself to be placed under oath and then present information relative to the petition and the standard set out in the Wooddale zoning code for the requested zoning. Well, you're going to have to go up to the podium, but get sworn in first, please.
Please, the board, my name is...
Well, up to the podium, please, and make sure the mic is on. We're televising this, so if the camera's on.
Now you're ready. Thank you very much. If it please the board, good evening.
State your name and address and who we are.
My name is James McCall. It's M-A-C-H-O-L-L. My address is 9501 Devon Avenue in Rosemont, Illinois. I'm the attorney representing John and Tom Barado in connection with this zoning and subdivision approval before the board this evening. One of the things I do have is I do have an affidavit of service of notice on surrounding property owners, together with the green return receipts that have been returned in my office. I could present those now or later or give them to the court reporter, whatever the board may choose.
Well, you could present it now and it'd be exhibit A. And if you don't mind, could you give the court reporter one of your business cards?
The property subject to this zoning hearing this evening is in connection with some unincorporated property. It's currently unincorporated to Page County and wholly surrounded by the city of Wooddale. The zoning districts to the north, east, and west are currently in the M1 district. The property to the south, I understand, to be a residential district, which is park district property. The petitioner is seeking, number one, annexation to the city of Wooddale. As I said, the property is totally surrounded by Wooddale. The proposed use in the M1 district would be an office warehouse type use, which is consistent with the surrounding uses on three sides. When the property comes in, hopefully, to the city of Wooddale pursuant to the petition and the annexation agreement, by statute, it would automatically be zoned in the R1 district. It's our proposal and it's our position that that R1 use would be inconsistent with the surrounding uses, particularly on the three sides which are currently in the M1 district. So, upon annexation, we're asking that the property be annexed, that the property be zoned into the M1 district for an office warehouse use. The proposed M1 district is also consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, which includes this unincorporated property in the M1 district. You may be able to determine, too, that the property currently does not have frontage on Benores Road, and the proposal is that approximately 6,400 square feet of property be exchanged with the property owner to the east, Phoenix Industries or Phoenix, in any event, so that the property, after the exchange, will have the sufficient frontage along Benores to allow the development and the subdivision. The subdivision would consist of two lots. The first lot would be the petitioner's lot, together with the property to the north, and the second lot would be the neighboring property, which would be designated as Lot Two. Mr. Barado does have some floor plans, some elevation plans of the proposed building site, and he can certainly address any of those. But in any event, I think, in conclusion, the proposed use in the M1 district is consistent with the surrounding uses, certainly will not diminish any of the surrounding properties because they're also in the M1 district. The village or city's comprehensive plan calls for the subject property to be included in the M1 district. So I think we comply, and I think that it would be proper, under the circumstances and under the evidence, as presented, to go ahead and allow this property to be rezoned in the M1 district and to allow the construction, subject to the building codes and zoning codes of the city, for an office warehouse use.
Okay. Can you read your reply to the zoning standards? Just read the replies, you don't have to... Questions?
Are you referring to the two-page document which I had submitted?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
Mr. McCall, if you could do that. The purposes are to alert the public to the standards review and to the fact that the petitioner has set forth evidence that it meets the standards review. So if you want to, you can talk about each of these standards, either by reading the responses that you've given or by touching on them. I think you've touched on some of them, but you want to make sure, because it's your responsibility, you want to make sure that in the record, there is a response to all of these questions.
That's fine. I apologize if I was not aware of exactly what I was to do. With respect to, number one, the existing uses and rezoning of nearby properties, the existing uses, as I pointed out, of the properties to the north, east, and west are currently in the manufacturing district and are used for commercial purposes within that M1 zoning district. The property to the south, I was under depression that was an R4 zoning use, apparently according to the staff report. It's actually park district property and it's in a residential use. As far as the extent which property values are diminished by the existing zoning, the surrounding properties would not be diminished. What would be diminished if the zoning were not requested because the property is currently vacant. Upon annexation without rezoning, it would remain vacant property with a residential zoning designation, that being the R1 district. And actually, the rezoning from the R1 to the M1 would, I think, add to the property values of the surrounding properties. With respect to number three, to the extent which the existing zoning or proposed zoning promotes the general health, safety, and welfare of the citizenry of the city, again, I think that the annexation would be beneficial to Wooddale. This is nothing more than a very small, unincorporated portion of DePage County, which really is nothing more than an island of unincorporated property wholly bounded by the city of Wooddale. And the improvement of the property and the rezoning from the R1 to the M1 would allow a development of the property, would allow a development of a office warehouse type use, which would be consistent with not only the city's comprehensive plan, but also with the surrounding uses on three sides. The same is true with respect to number four of the standards for review, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship. The gain, again, would be the development of a property which is currently vacant, which is currently unused, and in the R1 district, really would be very difficult to use for any other purpose other than an M1 district type use, which is what's suggested here upon a rezoning to the M1 district. Suitability for the purposes which is presented, again, it's not suitable, in my opinion, for an R1 zoning use. It is suitable for an M1 zoning district, which apparently the city has found sufficient and has found to be good uses for the properties on three of the four sides. The length of time the property's been vacant, the property has been vacant for quite some time. It was originally used as a residential use. It's been in John and Tom Barado's family for many, many years. With the growth of Wooddale and the use of the surrounding property as an M1 district, the use of the property for the development and to transform what is now an unincorporated vacant lot in DePage County into a viable office warehouse use within the city of Wooddale would be consistent with, as I said, the comprehensive plan and the land development of the area where this property is located. Compatibility, I mean, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but in any event, the R1 zoning district in this instance, upon annexation, just isn't consistent with the surrounding areas. The use of the M1 district is and is found to be for the surrounding properties, and absent rezoning, this property would just remain an unincorporated DePage County and remain with the residential use it currently has.
Okay. Before, Roger's going to be putting up the plot plan here. I didn't quite follow what you said with this land swap with Phoenix. He'll be putting it up on the overhead and...
Mr. Chairman, I do also have, if it would please the board, I do have a rather crude two-page exhibit where I've highlighted the boundaries of the property as they currently exist with respect to the rezoning, and on a second page, I have highlighted the area upon the exchange and what that would look like following that.
Well, maybe you give that to Roger, he can put it on if it's a little bit clearer than...
I don't know how well it'll show up. I can use this. It'll work just fine. The current property that we're talking about, if I can, is actually, I'll outline it on the board here.
It's from here, extends over to here, over to this area generally, up to the north, and then back over to the east, designated as Lot One, and this portion directly and immediately to the west. With the exchange, property that's located generally right here would be exchanged, and Barados would exchange this property for this, so that ultimately, the Barado property, which consists of the Bold Mark and extending all the way up to Benores Drive, that would be...
That would be the property that would then ultimately comprise Lot One of the proposed subdivision, together with the office and warehouse use. It kind of cleans the site up a little bit, too.
Just for purposes of clarification for the board, are you seeking annexation of all of what the Barados currently own, all of Lot One, or only that portion of Lot One that you're going to consolidate with or switch with?
Phoenix.
Phoenix.
No, the...
Can you show the property, just highlight the property that you're going to seek annexation of?
Sure. The property the Barados own is what's designated here as Lot One and also this area right here. So there's this rectangular piece of property that the Barados currently own. And so what we're ultimately looking to do is exchange this 6,400 square feet with this 6,400 square feet, so that the Barados then ultimately will own this square-shaped area right here with the front to Benores. And that property that I've described is ultimately the way it would look, is designated as Lot One of the proposed subdivision. The remaining property of Phoenix would be designated as Lot Two.
So if I understand this clearly?
Okay.
Your intention is swap property, then annex the new shaped property in, and then become, at the time of annexation, become M1, or...
Well, the plan generally is to, number one, get a recommendation out of this board, not only for zoning but for subdivision, and then mechanically working out the exchange. The subdivision would have to be signed by both owners of both properties, but the only property subject to the zoning here this evening is the first area that I laid out, which doesn't include that property to the north along Benores. This property right here, that I first showed you, in this area generally right here, that's the small portion of property that's currently an unincorporated DePage County. So the zoning only affects that property itself. I'm sorry if it's somewhat confusing. I think it kind of is.
Is the property that you're exchanging for currently in Wooddale?
Yes, sir, it is, and it's also zoned in the M1 district. But the other party to the exchange, quite wisely, wanted us to go through this process before the exchange because they otherwise are giving up M1 property for...
And the property you're giving up is not currently in the city of Wooddale?
Yes, sir, it is.
No.
Because...
The property you're giving up, not what you're receiving?
I had it reversed. The property that we're giving up is not currently in Wooddale.
Okay. I believe it would be north, yes. North of that, where Benores Drive is, the property between you and the road, is that annexed in the Wooddale? Is that part of the city of Wooddale?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? You said the petitioner has a plan or a drawing of what he's going to put on the lot?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And that's right here. I don't know if you want to put it on the screen or...
I'll put it up on the screen.
This is the first page to a two-page exhibit, and it just kind of outlines the elevation plans for a proposed building, and then the second page would include a floor plan with respect to that. It's somewhat preliminary, but we're looking at one of those two elevations for the northern elevation.
Is that going to be a three-unit building, then?
If you don't mind, I'll let Mr. Barado answer that question.
Yes, it is, if it's allowed.
Mrs. Kopp?
Are you going to be doing business there, or is this just for building and sublet?
No, we are going to be doing business there, ma'am.
What type of business?
We are in the construction business.
So your usage would be?
Our usage would be for storage of our equipment and non-hazardous building materials.
Thank you. How many square feet is this total project?
I believe it is roughly about 6,300.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruciani, have you got questions? Oh, okay. Is there any other... Is there anybody in objection to the petition or any member of the general public in attendance who wish to make a comment or has a question for the petitioner? If so, please stand and be placed under oath. Roger, is there a staff recommendation inserting this petition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Staff recommends approval for the request to rezone the property from R1 to M1 Limited Manufacturing with subdivision for the proposed construction and use of an office warehouse facility. This should be mentioned, too, that it is subject to final review and approval of both the site and stormwater engineering and be in full compliance with all building code requirements. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Noick from the board concerning the staff recommendation? Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Later during this meeting, the board will commence deliberations on the petitioner's request. I need a motion in a second?
So moved. Second?
There being a motion in a second, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp?
Yes.
Dr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Cruciani?
Yes.
Mr. Caddala?
Yes.
And Chairman Sei?
Yes. Motion is carried. The public hearing on case number 06-Z8 is closed.
Thank you very much for your time.
The second hearing is case number 06-SU9 in regard to the petition of Genuine Auto Parts Company doing business with Napa Auto Parts, which requests a special use and a re-subdivision to allow for the consolidation of three parcels into one and the construction and use of a 6,000-square-foot facility, which would house automobile retail, automobile parts retail use in conjunction with a warehouse and an office used on property which is currently vacant, located at the south side of Irving Park Road between Addison Road and Dalewood, commonly known as 372 West Irving Park Road. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp?
Here.
Dr. Madonna?
Here.
Mr. Cruciani?
Here.
Mr. Caddala?
Here.
Chairman Sei?
Here. I declare a quorum present. Roger, please indicate when the notice of the hearing in case number 06-SU9 was published and whether, Secretary, you have the certificate of publications from the newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is in receipt of the certificate of publication from the Daily Herald Newspaper. The public hearing notice was published on August 3, 2006 with a control number of 3791243, and a sign has been placed upon the property with the proper wording and commentary. Thank you.
Is the petitioner present? Please allow yourself to be placed under oath and then present information relative to the petition for the requested special use. And if you have any business cards, please give them to the court reporter, please.
My name is Jeff Yearwood, and I work for Genuine Parts Company, which does business as Napa Auto Parts. I'm from the Atlanta headquarters, and the Atlanta headquarters' address is 2999 Circle 75 Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, and I have with me our architect, Mr. Bill Oswald, also from Atlanta, and our engineer from Rosemont, Illinois, Mr. Brian Retazak, and they can answer questions about architecture and civil engineering. I just wanted to tell you that Genuine Parts Company is a $10 billion retail corporation. About half of that money comes from selling Napa auto replacement parts. Our competitors, you probably are familiar with, such as Autozone and Pep Boys and others like that. Genuine Parts Company has approximately 6,000 Napa stores nationwide. We own about 1,000 of those, and the other 5,000 are independent businessmen and women who own their own stores, and they are customers of ours. Our regional headquarters is in Naperville, and if you were to go to Naperville tonight, you could select from about 600,000 auto parts. We have about 100,000 square-foot warehouse there, which services all of the Chicagoland area, and if we are fortunate enough to build a store in Wooddale, it would be receiving parts from our regional operation in Naperville. I can also tell you that the store, if it were to be built, would be, we would spend about a half a million dollars on the property. We would spend another 3/4 million dollars on the construction itself. There would be somewhere between 10 and 15 employees, and we would anticipate, due to the size and the market of Wooddale, approximately $2 million worth of business per year coming out of that operation.
Now, the next gentleman is your site engineer?
He's my civil engineer, yes.
Okay.
And I, do you have anything to say? I don't know that we, other than answering questions later, do you want to introduce?
Well, yeah, we've got, one really, could you step to the, to the?
Sure.
Okay, you referred it as a ditch on the east side of the property. That is commonly known as Squaw Creek. Now, that's very critical for the people that live on the, on the southwestern part of the town, because there's over 500 acres drains through that, that little creek there. So I think you're going to have to do some real work on that there, to either close it, you can't leave it open if you're going to be putting up a building like this. You might have to put some elliptic pipe in there or something, because, because when it went through under Irving Park, when Jewel went in there, they had to put a big box covered in there, and, and the bank was pretty fortunate, because, you know, they, they kept away from the creek, but being that you're going to be in there, you're going to, I, I think you should really sit down with the engineer and our city service staff to consider putting that all in a pipe, you know? And then the other question I had is, being that Irving Park is pretty, pretty heavy travel during the day, there, there probably won't be any left-hand turns coming out of your, there, so it'll only have to be a right in and right out, so you'll have to take that into consideration. I imagine you'll have a traffic study engineer or, or staff here, or State Illinois will probably recommend that, but, because there's no way that anybody can make a left-hand turn into that piece of property, because you have, right there you have a turning lane and you have two, two lanes going eastbound.
Well, in regards to the, the drainage way, the site plan is such that we are not impacting the drainage way, we're not filling any floodplain or anything of that nature, so there, there is no impact proposed to that drainage way.
Well, being a member of the Stormwater Management Committee, and we have several members of this, this board there, I would recommend that you get on the agenda for the stormwater management, because that, that's one of our critical areas there, and people that are southwest of you that, that have that creek going through their property, we made them jump through hoops to, to keep it, keep it flowing, because we, we can't afford to have that, that thing back up and flood out our residents on, on the southwestern part of town.
Understood, we'll, we'll work with staff if, on their comments, but at this point we're, we're not proposing any, any fill in that floodplain area or any, any work in there.
Well, I, I know you don't do it, but as soon as a piece of property is built up, everybody sees a ditch and say, well, that's a place to, you can throw some junk, or we can do there, and once it's, like I say, I, I don't want to keep on harping on this thing, but it's, it's, it's a critical part of our town.
Okay. In, in regards to the access off of Irving Park Road, we're currently in review with IDOT. There's actually a letter that they had written on June 9, and I see that they had not copied the city on it, so I'm not sure that, that they've seen that, but they've, in concept, have approved the access location that was proposed, albeit at a, a narrower width than what was proposed on the original set of engineering plans. So I can, I can get a copy of that letter over to the city. Other than that, we're, like I said, we're still in review with them, with the access location, and Louis Abuna of KOA has done the traffic study report, which has been submitted to IDOT for their review and also to the city.
Now, are you going to have any green space in front of, in front of your building, or is it just going to be lot, lot line, a lot line, blacktop?
Well, there is, there's some green space up by the road and a little bit in between the two buildings and, and south of the building as well, and then on the east side, where we're not, we're staying out of the floodplain.
Okay. Any questions from the board?